Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 9, 2017 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. I would ask that everyone please silence any electronic devices or things that make noise. If you need to take a phone call, we ask that you please do it in the hallway. During the meeting, should an emergency arise, please calmly proceed to the nearest exit, down the hallway, to the right, and down the stairs. If that exit for some reason should be blocked, please exit left, make a right, and go down the stairs. Should you need assistance, please ask, and we will be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to observe a moment of silent meditation and remembering all of the people who have been affected by the tragedies in the United States over the last several weeks. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the council, good evening. We have a special proclamation to read this evening. So, this is a proclamation that acknowledges the experience that some people have in our community that most of us aren't aware of. And we have some representatives, I believe, today from our Disability Advisory Committee who have more experience than most of us with this exact situation in our community. So, I'll read this proclamation, and hopefully we can all think about the design of our communities as it affects those with limited abilities. So, whereas the National Federation of the Blind will observe National White Cane Safety Day on Sunday, October 15, 2017, and White Cane Safety Day calls special attention to the white cane as a symbol of independence and freedom for blind people, and promotes public awareness of the blind as equal and productive citizens. An observance of White Cane Safety Day allows for the NFB an opportunity to remind all citizens that persons carrying a white cane or using a dog guide are legally blind and have equal rights under the law to housing, all places to which the public is invited, including but not limited to places of lodging, amusement, and recreation, all modes of public transportation, and all streets and byways of our communities. An observance of White Cane Safety Day also allows the NFB an opportunity to remind all employers that blind persons receiving proper instruction and genuine opportunity actually compete on equal terms with the sighted persons and are in fact employed within the broad spectrum of competitive labor and within those professions. And White Cane Safety Day is also a good time to remind motorists that the law requires drivers to exercise appropriate care when approaching blind persons. So now therefore, I Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 15, 2017, as White Cane Safety Day in our city, and urge all citizens to join me in commending the National Federation of the Blind on its 77th year of promoting public awareness of the blind and raising expectations that enable blind people to live the lives they want. And Tim, I'm wondering if you wouldn't mind coming up?
Sure.
So, we today have representatives of the Disability Advisory Committee here with us and the National Federation for the Blind. And I think it is worth mentioning that Blind Industries recently opened a new walking path around their facility. Great facility, great group of people, and a great manufacturer right here in our community employing many blind persons and sighted persons as well. But we appreciate all that you do as advocates within our community, and we're grateful that you're here this evening. Thank you.
I want to tell you who is here. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So, this is Heather Guy. She's a board member, a state board member of the Maryland affiliate of the National Federation of the Blind, and Patty.
Patty, I'm there. I am the president of the Eastern Shore chapter of National Federation of the Blind in Maryland.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much.
And so, we meet here in Salisbury once a month on the second Saturday of every month usually at the library at 10:00, 10:30 in the morning. So, anybody?
Yes, and anybody, feel free to come this Saturday. We meet downstairs. We'll be in room one this Saturday around 10:00, 10:30. So, if you can make it, please come.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you get a picture up?
You want me to?
Absolutely.
Ready?
Ready.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Such a friend of mine.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Just as a note, Tim, I've had the pleasure of working with Tim on the Disability Committee for...
A lot.
A lot of years. And he does an excellent job. He's actually the chairman of the Disability Committee. So, I thank you very much, Tim, for your service and look forward to our meetings in the future.
Thank you for your support.
Have a good evening. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ierton, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening, President Heath. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the September 25 regular meeting minutes, the October 2 work session minutes, resolution number 2777, accepting a donation of a property on Fitzwater Street from the Salisbury Development Group, LLC, and resolution number 2778, accepting a donation of three used and unserviceable tracker tires from the Delaware Tire Company to be repurposed for the Salisbury Police Department Personnel Gym with a total value of $150. And that's it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Mrs. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Very good, thank you.
The first award of bid this evening is for contract 101-17. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for contract 101-17, the Hampshire Road Sewage Lift Station Replacement and Upgrade. This project includes a new submersible pumping station, SCADA system, onsite paving and fencing, demolition of the old submersible pump station and controls, furnishing and installation of 970 feet of four-inch force main, pavement patch, milling and overlay of North Gate Drive, removal of existing paving and reconstruction of Hampshire Road, and all incidentals for a complete and functional system. The procurement department followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Total of three vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of September 5, 2017, at 2:30 p.m. Georgian Lynch Incorporated in the amount of $1,404,825, JJIID Incorporated in the amount of $1,583,000, and Bearing Construction Incorporated in the amount of $2,184,359. Georgian Lynch Incorporated from Dover, Delaware, was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and reference checks yielded favorable replies. The Department of Infrastructure and Development wishes to award a contract to Georgian Lynch in the amount of $1,404,825, which will include all work as described herein, including a contingency for test pitting, removal and replenishment of unsuitable fill material, and concrete work if needed. Funds are available in the Hampshire Road Construction Project account that's noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to award contract 101-17 to Georgian Lynch in the amount noted above. Thank you. The second item is for contract RFP 16-17. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals for RFP 16-17. This is the Construction Administration and Inspection Services for the Hampshire Road Sewage Lift Station Replacement and Upgrade. The procurement department followed standard solicitation practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Five vendors submitted a proposal by the due date and time of August 14, 2017, at 2:30 p.m. All five vendors were determined to be responsive and responsible, and their proposals were reviewed by an evaluation panel of city staff according to the criteria specified in the solicitation, solicitation, excuse me, document. They were ranked on a scale of zero, unacceptable, to four, superior. George Miles and Bureau received an evaluation score of 3.87, with a total cost of $218,850. Davis, Bone, and Fridell received an evaluation score of 3.73, with a total cost of $197,300. Whitman, Reckert, and Associates received an evaluation score of 3.47, with a total cost of $210,780. GHD received an evaluation score of 3.12, with a total cost of $244,468. And lastly, Roush Incorporated received an evaluation score of 2.35, with a cost of $270,000. The Department of Procurement concurs with the award recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and thereby requests council's approval to award a contract to George Miles and Bureau, LLC, in the amount of $218,850. Funds are available in the Hampshire Road Lift Station Engineering Services Project Account noted in your packet. Next item this evening is an award for RFP 1417, Rails to Trails Planning and Design Services. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals for RFP 1417, Rails to Trails Planning and Design Services. This solicitation sought proposals from qualified and experienced multidisciplinary consulting firms to provide professional planning, urban design, and landscape architectural services for the Salisbury Rails to Trails Project. The final product will result in a Rails to Trails Master Plan and may include the 35% design plans for the seven segments of the Rails to Trails path currently from Fruitland to Naylor Mill Drive. The procurement department followed standard solicitation practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Eleven vendors submitted a proposal by the due date and time of June 20, 2017, at 2:30 p.m. The proposals were reviewed by an evaluation panel of city staff according to the criteria specified in the solicitation document, and they were ranked on a scale of zero, unacceptable to superior, four. You'll note that in your packet, I did list all eleven vendors, their evaluation scores, and the total cost for their proposals. The Department of Procurement concurs with the award recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and thereby requests council's approval to award a contract to Tool Design Group in the amount of $149,500. Funds are available in the Rails to Trails Project Account noted in your packet.
I have one, just as an observation.
Mm-hmm.
I assume they all had the same criteria.
Yes.
Most of them are within reason in terms of the normal spread. Two stand out, and not only do they stand out, but they had higher scores. Can you just, for more than curiosity, could you just sort of maybe give us a little bit of what happens?
Higher scores in terms of?
Well, if you look at the cost.
Are you looking at the price versus sure?
Yeah. I'm looking at the price and the score.
Sure.
Sort of combined.
The price is included in the evaluation score. So, when you see that score, we've already evaluated price as a part of that. Okay? So, if what you're looking at is you're going down to lines, say, four and five, and looking at their score with their price, you're saying, wow, how could they have that high of a score and that low of a price? We did speak to both vendors and did not feel that what they were proposing to offer for that was what we were looking for.
It just seems counterintuitive to me.
In other words, they received the same RFP everybody else got.
Yes.
Their response did not include everything that everybody else responded to.
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess maybe on this, are we going to make sure we communicate with them to include that this is congruent and works with all the other master plans we have that are intersecting? You know, we've got the Greenway, we've got the Bike Master Plan. So hopefully, this is going to be, I guess, work in part with that as well.
It's already schematically designed in the Downtown Master Plan and the Bike Master Plan. It's laid out for them.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The last item this evening is a change order. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number three in the amount of $59,920 for RFP 10-15, wastewater treatment plant construction management and inspection. This change will account for additional soil testing, concrete testing, and inspection hours. Funds are available in the wastewater treatment plant project account that's noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval for change order number three as noted above to GHD in the amount of $59,920.
Questions? All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2439 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Ierton.
Second.
Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Gold.
We have a lot of second readings, and I will highlight the changes. Most of these deal with the recent restructuring. So, ordinance number 2439, that is the same as the first reading. Ordinance number 2440, that's the same as the first reading.
Excuse me. Can we vote and then go to the next one?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll take them one at a time. We'll vote on them one at a time.
Okay. So, ordinance number 2439, that's the same as the first reading?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2439 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2440 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number 2440 is the same as the first reading.
If hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2440 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2441 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
This is as amended on September 11, 2017, ordinance number 2441. The changes here, line 62 through 65, stricken is the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall have oversight of the fire plan review and preoccupancy functions of the city fire marshal. Added is the city fire marshal shall report the results of the fire plan reviews and preoccupancy functions to the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Line 76 through 78, stricken is upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the Housing and Community Development Department shall make all necessary inspections to determine whether the building codes have been or are being violated. Those are the only changes.
Questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2441 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2442 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Ierton, Mr. Boda.
As amended on September 11, 2017, ordinance number 2442, the changes are line 125 through 128 being deleted. The Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall have oversight of the fire plan review function of the fire marshal. Being added is the city fire marshal shall report the results of the fire plan reviews and preoccupancy functions to the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. No other changes.
Questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2442 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2443 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number 2443, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2443 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2444 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
Ordinance number 2444, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2444 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2445 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number 2445, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor of ordinance number 2445 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2446 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton.
Ordinance number 2446, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2446 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2447 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
As amended on September 11, 2017, ordinance number 2447, change on line nine, the word "the" is added in between "for" and "fire," so before the Fire Prevention Code. Line 46, the "s" is deleted from "protection," and then the word "uniform" is deleted. Lines 108 through 128, the addition, additional language is when conducting plan review and preoccupancy inspections, the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development Fire Protection Division shall have authority to enforce this code when requested to do so by and in coordination with the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. When conducting post-occupancy inspections, the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development Fire Protection Division shall have authority to enforce this code in coordination with the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Lines 117 through 119 are deleted, which read Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development Fire Protection Division shall have authority to render necessary assistance in enforcement of this code when requested to do so by the city fire marshal. Lines 121 through 128 are being deleted, which read when conducting plan review and preoccupancy inspections, the fire marshal will report to the Director of Infrastructure and Development. The Housing and Community Development Department shall have authority to enforce this code. When conducting post-occupancy inspections, the fire marshal will report to the Director of the Housing and Community Development Department.
Questions? Excuse me. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2447 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll, let's see. I'll, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2448 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Ordinance number 2448, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2448 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2449 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
Ordinance number 2449, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 2449 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2450 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Ordinance number 2450, same as the first reading.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2450 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'm sorry.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Stay with me, stay with me, folks. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2451 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
As amended on September 11, 2017, ordinance number 2451, the only change is on line 10, .090 is deleted and moved to the other side of the word "and."
Questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2451 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, two for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda.
As amended on September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, ordinance number two, four, five, two, the only change appears on line thirteen, the word "compliance" was misspelled, it's just spelled correctly now.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, two for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, three for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number two, four, five, three, same as the first reading.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, three for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, four for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number two, four, five, four, same as the first reading.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, four for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, five for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson.
Second.
Mr. Irtan.
Ordinance number two, four, five, five, same as the first reading.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, five for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, six for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
As amended on September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, ordinance number two, four, five, six, line fifty-nine, middle department association of fire underwriters is deleted, and the additional language is approved inspection agency. Line sixty-three, same change. Line seventy-one, added are the words "and" and "the Department of Infrastructure and Development", deleted is the word "his", added is the word "their", line seventy-two, middle department association of fire is deleted. Line seventy-three, underwriters is deleted, and additional language is approved inspection agency. Lines seventy-eight, "and the Department of Infrastructure and Development", goes on to line seventy-nine, the word "he is" is deleted, the words "they are" are added. Line eighty, middle department association of fire underwriters is deleted, and the words "approved inspection" are added. Line eighty-one, the word "agency" is added. Line eighty-three, eighty-four, excuse me, the words "or the Department of", of the Department of Infrastructure and Development is added. Line eighty-seven and eighty-eight, middle department association of fire underwriters is deleted, approved inspection agency is added. Line one oh two to one oh three, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is deleted, and Housing and Community Development Department is added.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, six for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, second, seven for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number two, four, five, seven, same as the first reading.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, seven for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, eight for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Ordinance number two, four, five, eight, same as the first reading.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, eight for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, five, nine for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda.
As amended on September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, ordinance number two, four, five, nine, the only change appears on line twelve, sixteen is deleted and replaced with seventeen, so it'd be seventeen point one six six point zero eight zero B.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, four, five, nine for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, four, six, zero for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
First reading, ordinance number two, four, six, zero, ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending chapter fifteen point two seven, property maintenance, chronic nuisance property to exempt certain police calls. Whereas the mayor and city council have requested that the Housing and Community Development Department periodically review chapter fifteen point two seven, and whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of chapter fifteen point two seven demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment to keep the chapter current, and whereas the Housing Community Development Department does recommend approval of these proposed code changes, now therefore being enacted and ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that chapter fifteen point two seven be amended as follows. Chapter fifteen point two seven, the property maintenance, chronic nuisance property. The changes being proposed begin on line thirty, the call for service means an inspection or action upon receipt of a complaint or discovered during routine patrol, performed or taken by the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance NSCC has been deleted, replaced with Housing and Community Development Department, HCDD, which results in the issuance of a notice of violation, corrective action letter, or municipal infraction citation, and also includes an action taken by or response from the Salisbury Police Department to a property location. The following call shall be excluded as a call for service. A domestic disturbance, a domestic assault, a domestic escort, ex parte service, a crime against family and child, assault on a child and child abuse report, an emergency petition, a sexual assault on the fence, a mental subject, a suicide and suicide attempt, an overdose, a temporary vacant dwelling check, a welfare check, a drug court home visit, a probation and parole home visit, a crisis intervention home visit, routine warrant service, a use of an address simply for locations reference, and any incident when the resident at the location is a victim of a crime so as to not discourage calls for assistance based on a totality of the circumstances. Chronic nuisance property limits are being changed from five, they're being increased to seven on line forty-six, and it's any combination within a twelve-month period for service. Again, Department of Neighborhood Service and Code Compliance is being deleted and replaced with Housing and Community Development Department or Salisbury Police Department. The payment of a fine assessed by a court or HCDD, or a finding of guilt for violating chapters fifteen, twenty-four, fifteen, twenty-six, or title seventeen, or a finding of guilt for any criminal violations in connection with a call, connection with a call for service. Owner is being defined as means the owner of a chronic nuisance property. Person and property still have the same definition under fifteen, twenty-seven oh thirty, property. The owner of any property that becomes a chronic nuisance property shall permit the housing official to perform a full comprehensive inspection of the chronic nuisance property at least two times during the twelve months following the chronic nuisance property designation on a schedule to be determined by the Housing Community Development Department, and shall be assessed an inspection fee to be set by ordinance. B, after a property is designated as a chronic nuisance property, the owner shall be issued a fine in an amount up to five hundred dollars. In addition, the owner shall have his rental registration suspended for six months for the first such designation, twelve months for the second such designation, twenty-four months for the third such designation, and indefinitely for the fourth such designation. Said owner shall receive a probationary certificate of occupancy after the suspension ends until five years have passed without the property receiving another designation as a chronic nuisance property. Each suspension period shall begin when HCDD confirms that no tenants are occupying the property after all appeals have been finally concluded. For any previously designated chronic nuisance property that has not received the chronic nuisance property designation during the last five years, all previous designations as a chronic nuisance property shall be removed from the city's records, and any future designation as a chronic nuisance property shall be treated as a first such designation for the property in question. C and D are the same, except on line ninety-six, the last, the words "after the transfer has occurred" is added at line ninety-six. E is the same. F is new, and it reads if the property is a rental registered with the city in accordance with section fifteen point twenty-six of this code, then the following shall also apply. The owner of the rental shall be responsible for the chronic nuisance violations of the tenants. The owner may submit in writing notice to the Director of HCDD that the tenants occupying the chronic nuisance property are in the process of being formally evicted. A copy of the legal eviction documents shall accompany such notice along with all legal papers filed in the courts having jurisdiction over the eviction proceedings. Three, HCDD may suspend the accrual of a call for service that would cause the property to be considered a chronic nuisance property during the eviction proceedings, and the owner shall continue to provide up-to-date status notices to HCDD concerning the eviction proceedings as requested by HCDD. Four, this subsection fifteen point two seven point zero three F does not apply to the issuance of fines and municipal citations, but only applies to the designation of a property as a chronic nuisance property. Transfer of ownership, line twenty-four, in the event "the" is deleted and replaced with "a", a chronic nuisance property owner transfers ownership of the property to another person, the chronic nuisance property owner shall inform the housing official in writing within five business days after the transfer has occurred. Civil offense stays the same, it's a civil offense, not criminal. In fifteen twenty-seven point zero six zero, appeal. The change in "a" is that Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is being replaced with Housing and Community Development Department. And the time period, it says within twenty-one days after receipt is deleted and replaced with service of a notice. Under B, the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance, starting on line one forty-four, is deleted and replaced with Housing and Community Development Department. And violations, penalties, C and D stay the same under the prior code. Fifteen twenty-seven oh seventy, violations, penalties. The only change to that section is one sixty-one, it says for, it's each, is replaced with "for each day a violation remains uncorrected, it is a separate violation subject to an additional citation and fine."
Any questions? We do have several, several requests to make comments concerning this ordinance. I would ask that each of the speakers hold your comments to about four minutes, and if you have nothing to add, consequence, feel free to say ditto or I support what the gentleman said. First up at the podium would be Brett Hopkins, Brett?
Brett Hopkins, landlord and Sapoa president currently. In general, we understand what you're going for and, and most likely agree with it. We're trying to strike a balance between community beautification, maintenance, and criminal behavior. Part of what I'd like to get across to you is some wording that needs to be added here that not all violations are equal. Certainly, grass, snow removal, weeds in sidewalks, mold and mildew in houses, and then a police call, those aren't the same thing. What I'd like to see added in here is some wording that says if the landlord gets a citation for what we consider regular maintenance, mold, mildew, weeds, grass cutting, if the landlord performs on or before the due date of the citation, then the citation gets decremented from that property address because we performed. If we didn't perform on or after the due date, the city hits us with a fine, they may come out and actually do the service for snow removal or pulling weeds or grass cutting, then that, that count should stay on that house, and if it persists, the count would continue, okay? What I don't want to see happen is that to happen seven times, mold and mildew, snow, grass, and all of a sudden, that house is no longer a rental, which would then probably force the smallest of landlords, the guy that only owns one or two houses, to default on that house, and maybe even go into foreclosure, foreclosure personally, because they can't carry wherever they live, plus that house, the note on that, okay? What I'd like to have added is keep the seven count there. Add, one of those must be a call for service from the PD, because that's what you're trying to go for, is enhancement of what we currently have, okay? And we agree with that. If you're not maintaining the yard, it's run down, it's dilapidated, and landlords running it in a, in a way that causes the community stress, where they're putting bad landlords in there that are getting calls for police service, that's what we don't have today, that's what this is trying to add. So I'd like to see have added in here is at least one of those seven must be a, a police department call for service, okay? And I think that would then achieve what we all want to have happen. There's a good-looking house, decent land, decent residence and home. We're doing our part, putting decent people in there, communicating with that person, and maintaining the, the home for that resident, okay? Anything beyond that, the landlord should get wrapped on the knuckles very hard and potentially lose the ability to rent that house. And whatever happens after that, if they get forced into bankruptcy or foreclosure, they were warned, they had the chance to participate with the community and the police department, okay? Because the way it's written right now, the "and" police department is not part of it, okay? They could simply have seven grass cutting violations, trip the wire, lose the house from being a rental, which isn't going to get the grass cut anymore, any faster if that house is no longer a rental, I can guarantee you that. That's it, thank you. And I'll, I'll put my comments in an email on how I could even propose the language. I don't think it's much off of here. This, this ordinance is actually, has a lot of brevity, is the soul of wit, as we say. It doesn't require much modification to even get to where I think we should get this bill to so we all could be happy.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Next up is Gary Chandler.
Good evening, my name's Gary Chandler. I'm the president of GNI Properties here in Salisbury, and we have, my concerns about the ordinance as written is that a lot of it's, there's a lot of gray area, a lot of vague things that'll be subject to interpretation by the, the housing officials. And in our particular case, we have several hundred properties in Salisbury, scattered site, site, that are all registered as rental units, but quite a few of them are multifamily. And this addresses nothing about how a multifamily property, if something happens in unit one, am I blanketed in units two, three, and four for enforcement if something goes on in one unit and the other three tenants are perfectly peaceful and not causing any problems? Especially concerns when you wrap the police department in, that's like we're pulling the police department in this ordinance. My second major concern is the fact that this ordinance makes the tenant, or makes the landlord responsible for the tenant's behavior. It brings in an issue we addressed many times when the four-two debates, a vicarious liability, which is basically defined as the imposition of a liability upon one party for a wrong committed by another. So now, I'm the landlord and I'm getting blamed for the behavior of everybody that rents from us. And I think that's a tough position to be put in when you're involving police calls. The other portion of the police call thing I would like to address is, we call the police. We have trespassing issues where some, we might get a group of people on a porch, and we don't want those people congregating on the porch. The tenant is at work, the tenant's not at home, and I've got people hanging out. I make a phone call, we're posted, no trespassing. We make the call for service. And I don't want to be penalized for trying to improve the situation for my tenant, for the landlord, and to diffuse something that I don't want happening at the property either. I think that's something that really needs to be addressed. We have received multiple notice of violation for the same property that happened at the same time, the same day. An inspector will pull up, for example, and say, "Okay, the grass needs to be cut and there's litter." I get two letters. "It may also need to be power washed." There's one, two, three calls for service, bang, 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 in one stop. That's killing me if I've got a cap of seven. I'm gonna be out of business in two weeks. We have, you know, it's power wash, cut grass, litter, and weeds in the sidewalk. We are exempting some police calls for service. Why not exempt some of the really minor calls for service, such as the grass that's gonna get cut, and the weeds that are gonna get pulled, and the power wash that's gonna happen? Because you're really, like, you have a chance of getting piled on here. And I think there's the opportunity to mitigate this. We get many, because of the volume of properties we have, get many calls for service. We get almost zero citations. It all gets addressed. We take care of it. We're a responsible landlord. We roll fifteen trucks every day, we're radiators dispatched. We're looking after what we perceive as the problems and the problem properties, and we address them when they come up. It's important, I think, give us credit for that and not hammer us when you could eliminate some of these really, really minor things, really different than somebody like bringing the police department over versus having mold on the side of a house. Our lease provides for single-family tenants to cut their own grass. We've had a situation where the tenant goes out and cuts his grass, I get a letter because he didn't weed whack right up against the foundation. So the guy cut his grass and he's just not a landscaper. And we're put in a situation where it's subjective by the building inspector saying, "Well, I'm out of compliance." I mean, I just, it's a tough one when you've got a tenant that's performing the way he's supposed to, but it's not quite what the building inspector was looking for. So, like, it's another tough situation that we shouldn't be really slammed on. I'll give you an example. We donate 102 Princeton as a substation for the police. I've done it for many years. It doesn't get used. But, they also don't cut their grass occasionally. I get the letter for cutting the grass when the police don't cut the grass at the substation. So, I mean, there's a double-edged sword there where we're really trying to do something to get the police in the neighborhoods. We requested bike patrols as the most effective, or walking patrols, to get in those substations, and they're not being manned. And I have had grass letters on these properties. Goes, "We're not getting an accounting for police calls for services." They have a website that posts four hundred of them, or whatever they are, you know, daily calls for service, but we don't have the time, or I guess, our office right now doesn't comb those calls for service that's produced on a website by the police to see if something happened at one of our properties. And I get no phone call, no notification that there was even an activity. So, something's gotta bring us into this communication to let us know that actually the police responded to one of our properties. And it could have been the situation where we called on the trespassing. It goes back to the biggest thing, so I would say, please consider exempting, on the police calls, you're exempting quite a few things. At the very least, consider exempting the trespassing call for service where the landlord calls it in, or we're trying to correct the situation. I would suggest exempting the minor violations of grass and the weeds in the sidewalk where those are certainly something that can be decided outside of, you know, foreclosure of your right to rent a property. And if you, that's, I think, if you did a few of these things and incorporated that into your bill, you're gonna enlist the landlords as your partner. We're not gonna have an adversarial relationship to get this pulled together. And, believe me, we'd like to have the same outcome, I think, that you all would.
Could you wrap up, please?
Yes, sir, I can. And that's basically, I just don't want to discourage either side for calling for calls for service. So, thank you.
Next up is Richard Insley.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I subscribe to what the two gentlemen who preceded me have told you. Additionally, I want to touch on maybe a half a dozen things here, and I'll mention the lines where they appear. First one is line number forty-five, and it's unclear to me whether, when an inspection occurs, if the inspector finds four or five different things, say he finds seven different items, does that shoot my seven, or is that one event? That's something I think we need to know. Presumably, it should be one event. I think it would be extreme if there were seven different things found, I don't know, receptacle's not working, the grass needs cutting, whatever, if they were all considered separate events. So, does anybody have the answer to that?
We'll work on it.
Okay, okay.
Legislation that's passed previously in enforcement, we did lump everything in on one day as one thing. I don't know whether or not it's the same.
So this exists, that's all existing law, so, I mean, that's...
I understand that, but, inasmuch as this is on the table...
Right, I'm just saying, I don't know the answer to your question.
I know from when I was on the housing board, when some cases came before, so I noticed that if they had multiple violations, that they were, like, separate letters. So I don't know if they, I don't know how they were counting them, but I know from our agenda, it was like, they got like, if they got three violations, they got three letters. So, I mean, that's...
So today, for chronic nuisance, apparently, when it's, it's all on one letter, not on separate letters. However, I still think it's worth us getting you an answer.
If it's one visit...
I don't know that that's the answer.
One visit and one inspection seems like to me that ought to be one event.
I agree with that. We gotta, let's work to get you an answer.
Okay. Second one is line eighty-six, and it says, "After completion of two inspections with no violations," and I think, I'd like to see inserted there with no uncorrected violations because if you find, in an inspection, find something and the property owner takes care of it, then I think, and I think Mr. Chandler mentioned that, that that should not, should not count against you. Now, if it's not corrected within the allotted time given, then it should count against you. Moving on, line ninety-six and line one hundred twenty-six, both refer to change in ownership and submitting notice within five days after the transfer has occurred. It's not clear to me what the impact is if the notice is not received by the department in five days. Is there some kind of penalty associated with that, or is it just saying that, you know, please do this within five days? I can visualize where somebody maybe is out of town when a settlement occurs or something and not meet the five-day. Is there something that I don't know about that's gonna be a...
No, there's no teeth to that. I think the intent there, and I can't remember from the initial language, but I think the intent was just to say that if you want to be, if you want the clock to start, if the new owner wants that clock to start over, it will, but it only does it on the basis of notifying, and the intent is to make it, you know, an expedited process, but, no, there's no.
So the clock doesn't start ticking until I let you know?
Right.
Yeah, that's reasonable, okay. Line number one oh six, and this is the issue of vicarious liability. I won't dwell on it, it's already been addressed, but I'll just point out that the, of course, vicarious liability is the responsibility of one for the actions of another. And that has a place in the law of agency, but I'll point out to you that the tenant is not the landlord's agent. He's also not the landlord's employee, which is another place where vicarious liability has its place. Also, not a child or relative. So, I don't think vicarious liability has a place here, and I expect that it would probably, probably find enforcement by a court very difficult. I don't think that that belongs in here. Moving on, line number one thirty-nine. This has to do with appeals to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the timeline is twenty-one days after, and the current language is after receipt of the notice sent. That's being changed to after service. I know what after receipt means. If after I've received it, I've got twenty-one days. After service, I'm not so clear on that. I think it's reasonable that after the party receives notice, I think they should receive notice before the twenty-one-day period clock starts ticking. So I would suggest to you that you keep the word "after receipt of notice." Moving on to line number one sixty, and it mentions, "Shall be guilty of municipal infraction for each violation and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $500 per violation." So if I read this correctly, if I get an inspection and there are ten items on that inspection, then I'd be subject to a maximum of $500 per item. Ten times five hundred is five thousand, and then you read the next line, it tells you that that's per day. So, in five thousand a day, thirty days in a month, sounds like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to me. That doesn't sound reasonable at all. I understand what you're trying to do, but there needs to be some reason in this. And I think it'd be very difficult to get that sustained in a court of law. I'm aware that the courts have routinely reduced those fines which they determined were excessive. And I guess the last thing that I would say is, a lot of this could be resolved if we could have some communication when these things are being drafted. There's a wealth of experience in these people who own property and have had experience with this stuff, and it would, my personal preference would be that it would be a lot easier to work some of these things out if we could have some communication, talk to one another, ask, you know, "What's your experience? Will this work?" I think we understand what your objective is, and I think we're on board with your objective. We don't like nuisance properties any more than you do, maybe even less because we get painted with the same brush, and we don't like that. But we could offer a lot of help, I think, if we could just, through the Property Owners Association or other avenue if you choose, to give us a heads-up on it and have some discussion about how could we make this better, or what would work and what wouldn't work.
If I could just respond to that...
Surely.
That's why we have work sessions. At the last work session, actually Brett came and made some suggestions, and we listened and actually had some discussions and made some changes based on what he had said. And I, it's hard for us to reach out. I mean, you have an organization. I think that you need to have your, somebody check the website as to what's coming up on the agendas, they're all published. And we would be happy to listen to whatever input you would have.
Well, we try, we try to do that. As you know, we're not a hundred percent successful at it, but at the same time, when there are certain ordinances, the previous dozen ordinances preceding twenty-four sixty tonight, that aren't gonna generate any controversy whatsoever, but...
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Often, you can predict which ones are gonna, you know, are gonna create some excitement. So anyhow, my point is that we'd be happy to work with the city, where our objective is, I believe, very similar to yours. We just don't want to get hit in the back of the head with a two-by-four intended for somebody else. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I just, I think Mr. Chandler brought something up about the multifamily units. I believe in our discussion, and I thought it was in here and I can't find it, I thought I saw it, but I think the idea, or what was said to me in the work session was that if it's a unit, an apartment, it's that specific unit, it wouldn't apply to the entire apartment complex.
We did, because we explained that to one of the groups that were here.
Susan sent us a message while we were sitting here. We can't, we can't expand a violation or a call for service at one unit to a property-wide. So, everything would have to be attached to a unit. So let's say there was a call for service, right, to an address. Let's say there was a call for service, you know, that was not clear, it couldn't be attached to, you know, an individual unit. That can't be done arbitrarily, so it couldn't, you know, if it was in a unit or on a porch or something, I mean, that would be one thing, but, you know, just because it was in, I'm just gonna make something up, Pemberton Apartments, you couldn't say, "Oh, well, yeah, that's sort of near unit, you know, thirty-six and building four." You can't, you know, we couldn't do that.
But that does happen with the police reports.
It does.
When you get a call for service, say it's on the College Avenue, and there's a big crowd, they assign it to the closest address.
And I think the chief left, but we've tried to...
She's here.
She's here, I'm sorry, chief. But we've tried to exclude anything that would be included, like a traffic stop, anything that would be just coded to an address for purposes of tracking. We've tried to remove all of those. And I think you've brought up some other good ones tonight, like trespass. That's one that we wouldn't want to, you know, be treated as a punishment to a landlord just because it was trespassing on their property.
And I think that falls under that you're considered the victim in that situation, which is what is already written in there.
I saw that part, I didn't really clearly see trespassing.
No, I think it needs to be explicitly added.
Well, if you were trespassing somebody from your property, you're considered the victim.
I thought you said it protected the resident.
Well...
I think it's something...
Trespass, you're still considered the victim of a crime.
And as I perceived your other statement that you said about the property as a multifamily unit, and you may have apartment one A, one B...
That's correct.
One C.
Yes.
And I think from our understanding from our work session, we said that, because we had that other meeting with the other organization that was there, that only violation would be, stem would be the one to one A, whoever the police were called to, that one particular apartment, not the whole unit.
I do have a question, and I think it kind of goes back to his point about grass in the sidewalks, power washing, and weeds. If it's a multifamily unit...
Where's the draw?
Exactly. Do, you know, I mean, if you go, if it's like Milpon Village.
Mr. President, I'm making a motion to take this back to work session to get, and just cut someone in notice. to vote his question answered. We also have the email from Michael Weiser, the owner of the rental property. He has 106, he meant 160 in his email. The owner of the rental should be responsible for the crime used to violate the tenants. I understand that concern. I don't know whether or not, I know what I agree or believe and have in the past, but until Mr. Golov or Mr. Tillman come back here with case law that tells me this means this and this means that, I'm not ready to do anything more than that. I'd like also the $500 per day. I know we come up with those because we have a equation that comes up that says this is how much it's going to cost, but I have lived through the life of having that stuff run out by good friends of mine, even on the Board of Housing Adjustments and Appeals, some of which sit here at the table with me today. Yeah, him, and this one too. That's why he's not here. He wants me to have to call my mouth for everybody. And then the one event, one violation, let's get that clarified as well, and for those four reasons, I'd like us to take this back to work session. I make that motion.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just say that this is first reading. It doesn't need to go back to work session.
Well, it needs to go tomorrow, but we can all talk about it again.
Yeah.
We can bring it back Monday.
But, yeah, you can. But then it would have to go back, it would have to start all over for a second first reading, unless you voted on the first reading tonight.
No, it does.
And opened it and moved it to work session after your first reading tonight.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
We can do it to amend. We can go through this, approve it, and then go amend, amend after we have a meeting.
Yes.
At the work session. We can add that tomorrow, add that to the agenda.
We have 60 days, right?
We're going to add it to the agenda. We'll be on the work session next Monday.
Only if it's forwarded from here tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Please come to have a discussion.
So, I have a variety of things that I'd like to add, and we can bring these up in the work session too, but, so, we did get an answer to one visit is one violation, even if it's nine violations, it's one violation. One visit is one violation, same as one call for service is one violation. That's it. Fines per item and per day is consistent throughout city law, not just in this section, but everywhere else. Courts like it because it is a deterrent factor, but they do, they never enforce it in full. So, there's, you know, probably some theoretical approach there that we could redesign, but we probably want to redesign the entire city code, not just one section. Let's see. Police calls for service, notice, there's no doubt about it. We would have to, I think, start giving notice to the landlord to say, hey, a call for service happened, because otherwise, you know, there's not a parallel between a police call for service and a code violation, because on code violations, there's an obvious notice provided, but there wouldn't be on police calls for service, so that would have to change. So, that's something procedurally, and probably in code we should dictate, and then procedurally the city should take on. Trespass, as I mentioned, obviously, I think that needs to be included. I don't know that I would exempt other code violations. You know, I don't know where you draw the line necessarily, except, and I think if you don't, you know, the city would be, end up doing a lot of property management, but the compliance, I think that solves it. You know, if there's an attempt to comply, then it's over, and you, it should not count as one of, it should not count as contributing to a chronic nuisance if the landlord is, you know, quickly responsive to, oh, yeah, got it, okay, the grass got too long, or, you know, the shutter fell off or whatever. And then, you know, we do want to make sure that, you know, all of what we're doing doesn't discourage calls for service, because obviously the trust that, you know, we've built to increase calls for service is huge, and we want to keep that going. And I think there's a real conversation that needs to be had about the one call for service from PD being required. You know, I think it's, that's interesting, because, you know, it questions, it brings up the question of what's the intended target, because the existing code is all about code enforcement and all about code violations, and those, you know, five code violations adds up to, you know, a chronic nuisance. To say one police call is required, there's probably some properties that would continue to be negative influences in a neighborhood from a code enforcement standard, you know, and say, well, what do you do about those properties? I don't know. That's something that we'd really need to consider, because now those would no longer be considered chronic nuisances, even if they were having the same detrimental impact on a neighborhood that they were having the day before we adopted that law. So, you know, a reasonable conversation to be had, for sure. And then, the one unit for multifamily, you know, enforcement doesn't apply to an entire multifamily, as Artie answered.
I have a question. The line 47, the 12-month period, is that a rolling 12-month? In the work session, we talked about calendar year.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought it was a calendar year.
I'll say calendar year.
I don't, that's what we did.
I believe the code, the ticketing system the city operates is not sophisticated enough to do a ticket count on a rolling 12.
Yeah, that's probably true.
They're lucky to get a calendar year count.
That's almost certainly true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it calendar years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's find out if we can, if we concurrently do it by calendar year, but, yeah.
And could I ask a question, Mr. Chan, was it Mr. Chandler? Yeah, I think it was Mr. Chandler, that said he provide, you know, he asked his renters to cut their own loans. So, when the city sends you that violation...
Right.
Do you send it to your residents?
Immediately take it to the tenants. You put it on our calendar. If the tenant does not cut the grass, in the city's period of time, we cut it and build it down.
Okay.
But it's in their lease. It's a contractual obligation for single families. We cut all our multifamilies.
Okay.
But for single-family properties, the tenant is responsible for cutting grass and snowboarding.
I just want to know how you notify your tenants, you know, if you did, okay?
Hand deliver it.
Okay.
We don't mail it, we don't send it two days in the air or three days in the air. We don't deliver it, and unless the tenant knows that their grass needs to be cut.
I might ask that the city approached the property too.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I know they do, but I just wanted to know how the landlords or the villagers handle it.
As soon as we're notified, the tenant's notified. So, the other, only other thing I'd like to make you suggest, and it's like a threshold thing on this grass and the...
Can you, can I ask you to go back to the podium, please? Because it's, we're recording this, and I want to make sure we catch, catch everything.
I guess the thing that, we're on board with getting these properties tightened up and having code enforcement and improving the quality of our housing stock, but if the threshold is set to that we're out there, you know, jumping through hoops continuously, I mean, I'm not going to have time to remodel, I'm not going to have time to put a roof on, but if you did something like for the grass and the weeds and the mildew, which are not, they're not really dragging the neighborhoods down, it doesn't even exist in half the year, because the grass doesn't grow in the winter, but in the summer, you get a rain, and you get, you know, it sprouts up, you know, three inches overnight. If you could make non-performance on those notices of violation of grass or weed or mildew, if somebody just doesn't address it and a citation is issued, that would be the threshold where they should get a strike against them. I mean, that would make sense to us as we're out there cutting the grass if the tenant doesn't, and actually, I use contractors to cut my grass. And when, I've had good contractors, and I've had terrible contractors, and it's nice to have a good one, because I don't get letters from the city, and the guy's spraying weeds in the sidewalk and edging and blowing and cutting. So, if you could just raise the threshold a little bit on the smallest of the infractions, so like if it hits a citation level, then somebody's not paying attention. Like I said, we get notices to cut the grass, we get very, very few citations, just very few, because it gets taken care of.
Okay. I think we're not going to resolve the issue tonight. We're going to have further dialogue at the, but I would, I think, I think it is a good suggestion from the mayor. We're going to have the first reading tonight as it exists, and then we'll have the meeting, and then we'll amend it so we don't delay the process. Okay? Everybody understand, we're not passing it tonight. We are doing the first reading. We will have it, we will have our discussions at the work session, then that will give the opportunity for the mayor to go back to the staff and clean up some of these things, and then have us have a discussion with your input next Monday night, Monday afternoon, 4:30. Okay? Does that suit everybody?
Can I just, real quick, I'm sorry. I know.
It's okay.
No, we all want to go.
You're going to say...
But, so, I think, I think there's also, there's a really good point being made here. There were only, there were 4,876 violations identified, no, there are 9,483 violations identified so far in 2017. 4,876 have been brought into compliance, 4,282 are still in the open compliance period. Only 112 citations issued. So, I mean, you know, that's the focus. It's those 112 properties. It's not the, you know, or those 112 instances, not the 4,000-plus. And, you know, it's also probably worth figuring out before the work session is, how many chronic nuisance properties did we identify last year? And how many actually rose to that level? It's probably, you know, a two-digit number at most. And then, and then back to the vicarious liability thing real quick. If we look at the, if we look at the language and that, that one line, I mean, it might even be worth striking that, that one line, because I think the whole point is, it's, you're only liable for what you have the ability to control with, you know, the vehicles that are at your disposable, disposal, like the lease. So, you know, if the landlord just doesn't enforce the lease and, you know, and lets, you know, these things get out of control, then, and under those circumstances, that's when we want to get to this point of utilizing this law.
The only thing that I have to say relative to that, that piece of it, when I used to run a manufacturing plant, and I know we were talking about employees, but you run the risk in some of the instances if you have your, your tenants cutting your grass, just, they're, you know, on their property. That's a hairy line, but I will tell you that there was little patience for the manager, general manager of a facility, if one of his individuals in the facility opened up a wrong valve and let stuff go down the sewer. Guess who they came after?
Yeah.
The general manager. It's an employee, but it's also, it also cannot, may not be an employee. It may be someone who's on the street who decides to cut a valve and cut a lock and do things.
And the same may be a disruption by non-tenants.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying, someone's got to be accountable for those people.
No question. Can I add one more thing about 30 seconds?
No, not tonight. We will have time to discuss it, Richard. We have two, we have several other things we have to, we have to go through, if I could. We've had the time and given the time to have the talk. Danny Morris, is it okay if we...
Work session's fine.
Work session's fine? Great. And I think that we can, your point is well taken. All of your points are well taken, and I think we'll take it under advisement, but let's proceed with the process and then make sure that we get it ironed out correctly. Okay? All right. I think we've beat this horse. Can we, Mr. Irtan, you had a motion on the floor.
I did.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
You don't want to vote on the first reading? That's what we're talking about now. We're talking about reading.
Well, I'm just going to laugh and giggle a little bit. I'm afraid if we had another 15 minutes, a whole lot more of this would be changed. So, what I'm worried about is, I think this whole thing should go back to work session. If, if...
Yeah, I do too.
That's fine.
The whole thing should go back, because the mayor is going to, there's...
It's going to push it.
You just said, I don't know if that needs to be in there at all. If the mayor's saying that this is what came from the administration, then let's go back and start this thing over from scratch, please.
Agreed.
All right. We have a motion to table. Is that correct?
Correct.
We have a motion to table.
That's, that's not sending it back to work session. What Mira said sends it back to work session.
Okay, I will amend my motion to do what Mira said.
You know what? I'm so...
Why don't we let Mira make the motion?
What did I say? I don't know. Could you clarify?
Well, we go through with the first reading, and we discuss it next week, and then we...
Could you clarify for me what it is I should do?
So, Jim just needs to withdraw his motion.
I withdraw the motion.
And then we vote on it, discuss it next week.
Correct.
If they think, if...
We don't even have to bring it back to the next legislative session if you haven't gotten everything changed.
That's correct.
We have 60 days. That's correct.
You bring it back to work session.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it'll have to get back on the agenda again, and if we haven't resolved all the issues, we won't bring it back.
Yeah.
And my feeling is, is that we should, our goal should not be to do all of these things in one swoop, because this is why this stuff gets slipped through the cracks, and we end up here tonight with these people looking at us like, why don't you people understand this? And literally, it is significantly changing as we speak. Could we go back and we do one section and do it well, and then take the time to do another section and do it well? I just, this, this is, it's two lines exempt certain police calls, and this is what we got. This has happened before on issues when it has come to the rental industry, where people have had to show up, and we're all sitting here, and things have to go back and get changed. I'd like to get it done before we bring it out here in the public to vote on. That's all I'm asking.
So, everybody's...
Sometimes legislative process is messy. It's like making sausage, yeah.
Yeah, or scrap.
But if, if things were going to change, and people's opinions were going to change here on the elected side of the table, I think maybe we should have known that before. That's all.
Well...
And some of my, and some of my feelings have changed as well. Mine are more clarification issues, but we have, we have had some changes of opinion.
Yeah, and I've taken some notes, and I'm kind of...
And I think...
There were good suggestions made tonight, too.
I'm not deciding the merits of them. I'm saying that those things have happened.
Well, and I, I'll have to say it, and I'm not doing it negatively, although you could take it that way. Brett was the only one that showed up at the work session last time. We need to get you, if you're, if you're interested and you want to be there and give your mind, you got to, you got to come to the work sessions, because that's where we do the heavy lifting. This is really, we should have had this all ironed out and everything. So, I understand Mr. Irtan's frustration. I understand the council's frustration, but I'd rather do it right than do it wrong. So, if we could, my recommendation would be, and I know it's going, it doesn't sound like it's going to accomplish the same thing, but I think it will. I'd like to go ahead and get the first reading done, go back, and then we'll bring it back after we have the input and amend the first reading for the second, the second reading.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So, if there's no more questions or comments, we'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2460 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2461 for the second reading.
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan.
Ordinance number 2461 is the same as the first reading.
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2461 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2462 for the first reading.
Some move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan.
Ordinance number 2462, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 10.20 Parking Districts of the Salisbury City Code by revising the boundary of the parking authority to include all of the central business district. Whereas the parking district code defines a boundary for a special assessment district known as parking authority, and whereas the purpose of the parking authority is to provide a mechanism for financing the cost of acquisition and development of off-street parking facilities located in the area, and whereas the parking authority boundary includes a portion of the central business district, and whereas the purpose of the central business district is to maintain and strengthen the role of the downtown area as the community and regional center for a broad range of activities, and whereas the parking authority boundary should apply to the entire central business district area, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development has reviewed the code and recommends modifying the parking authority boundary to include all of the central business district. Now, therefore being enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, that Chapter 10.20 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Chapter 10.20 Parking Districts, Chapter 10.20.010 Special Assessment District Designated Boundaries. The following described area located within the corporate limits of the city is designated as a special assessment district to be known as parking authority for the... as a special assessment district to be known as Parking Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition and development of off-street parking facilities located in the area. The boundaries of the Parking Authority shall be as follows. The current description is being removed entirely and replaced with a new description that covers the revised boundaries which are shown on the map that is attached to the packet. Is that good enough, or would you like me to read the...
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2462 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.